Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting for Pasco City Council in this evening of August 5th, 2019. We have agendas available on the corner desk over here if you'd like to grab one or a more detailed council packet is available through the city's website. We also televise our meetings live on Charter Cable Channel 191 as well as through that same city's website, those are reviewed later on too if you'd like. We also have a new audio system that we're getting used to, so I'll be learning how to use it tonight. And so I asked the council and public's indulgence and there's a couple little new features and learning how to work things work. If you get a chance to speak with council, you come to the podium up here ensuring your name with us, we'd be very grateful for our record keeping. And if you have any cell phones, I'd ask you to mute those so that the meeting isn't interrupted. With housekeeping taken care of noting that Mr. Serrano and Mr. Alvarado are absent this evening, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Barajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Here.
Martinez.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Watkins.
Here.
Five present, Mr. Mayor.
And if you'd join us in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the consent agenda, we consider these items to be routine, we'll do them as a single roll call vote unless a member of the council or the public wants something considered separately. Those items include the approval of the minutes from the July 30, excuse me, the July 15th meeting and also a special council meeting on July 31st. Bills and communications to approve claims, the total amount of $9,73,035.96. Also to approve bad debt write-off for utility billing ambulance and other accounts in the amount of $221,750.77. With a portion of that specifically $112,128.92 to be turned over for collection. There is a approval for a service agreement with Tri-Deck and those are the items on the consent agenda, anything to be removed or considered separately. Not Mr. Maloney.
I think, Mr. Mayor, I've moved to approve the consent agenda as read.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Martinez, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Watkins.
Yes.
Barajas.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Milne.
Yes.
Five yeses.
With that, we have a consent agenda unanimously, we go on to item four on the agenda, proclamations and acknowledgements. Two sections this year, yard and business of the month and then a little later on we have a proclamation for Center Week, for Health Center Week. And what we do during a six-month period, spring to fall, is we take and recognize with some volunteers, go out into our community and look at some different, four different areas of the city, of some homeowners that take a little bit of extra effort to make their yard and landscaping look good and we'll see some pictures of that. And what we do is invite them down here and I see at least one, couple this evening and maybe some others. You're gonna see pictures of folks that just did a little bit extra and it's great to see. And we give it a little certificate and they get to have a yard of the month signed in their yard to the envy of their neighbors. And but most importantly, council, the way we say it is, we hereby express our gratitude for your contribution toward community enrichment and quality of life by the improvements made to the natural beauty of your surroundings and serving as a good example for others. And the first example tonight is at 828 North Owen Avenue, home of Erendira Diaz. Is anybody, are the Diaz's here this evening? And if they're not, we will end up getting them a certificate, but you're gonna see a nice, well-appointed home. In this case, some wonderful rose bushes and a neat little black fence, that's, that's nice. And again, we do divide this up into four different quadrants of the city, so it's not just particular neighborhoods. Second this evening is 1539 West J Street, home of Judy and Joe Church, are the churches here this evening? And they're not, but that's okay, we'll give them their certificate. Also kind of fun, I like to see, oh, some, some of that wonderful curbing. And the third one this evening is 4304 Sedona Drive, home of Bob and Jeanette Smith, are the Smiths there this evening, and they are. If you come on up, I'd like to give this to you. The usual question as we ask, who does all the work?
Sheriff.
You should.
I do all the stuff for the most. Thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna note, Bob is an avid golfer with a very high, high handicap. And we golf together, I send those all the time and it's always a pleasure to see him at the golf course and, and congratulations on this, thanks Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
All right, next, next up we have 8816 Landin Court, home of Robin Jackson. Is Robin Jackson here? Please, come on up.
So. Who does all the work? Do they do all the work over here? You do all the work?
Beautiful home. And then finally, we have one more certificate of appreciation to give at 1921 West Court Street for, for our business of the month, which is Pizza Hut. So is any representative from Pizza Hut here for, to receive this? Well, again, their remodel has been just, just a beautiful little spot there on Court Street, so it's good to see that and good to see the community making sure that, that they're, they're what makes the city beautiful, so glad to see that.
And I'm remembering, I think we go through next month, September is probably, I think we're doing this at least one, maybe two more months and then we do it again in the spring. So this has been a great program and thank you again for doing that little extra bit, serving as example to, to members of your community. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation related to National Health Center Week. And we have a representative this evening from our Tri-Cities Community Health Chief Executive Officer Jim Davis. And if you wanna come on up, Jim, I'm gonna read a proclamation and if you have a few words for us at the end, I'd love to hear them after I present this to you. So August 4th to the 10th of this year is National Health Center Week. And of course, proclamations have lots of wheresth's and I'll summarize a few of those. Including whereas the Tri-Cities Community Health has been rooted in the Tri-Cities community for over 35 years, serving as a safety net for the most vulnerable in our region while continuing to innovate and drive savings for public budgets. And whereas Tri-Cities Community Health is governed by a patient majority board ensuring that patients are engaged in their own healthcare decisions. And Tri-Cities Community Health continues to be a model for effectively overcoming barriers to accessible healthcare, including geography, income and insurance status. And doing so improves health status outcomes and reduces system healthcare costs. And whereas during the National Health Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of the Tri-Cities Community Health and its vital role in shaping the past, present and future of the Tri-Cities regional healthcare system. I, as mayor of Pasco, proclaim August 4th to 10th as healthcare is Health Center Week and encourage all residents of Pasco to support this endeavor.
If I might, I'll be very brief, Mayor Watkins, members of the council, certainly members of the city staff. TCCH gratefully accepts this commendation, this proclamation as a reflection of the ongoing partnership that we certainly enjoy with the city of Pasco in a variety of activities, all geared towards supporting the improvement of the health of the residents of Pasco, Kennewick, Richland, the areas that we serve. You are all very cordially invited to our signature event, which will be Friday afternoon from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. It will be our back-to-school health and wellness event where we'll be giving out backpacks, all sorts of school supplies for kids as they maybe don't anticipate with a whole lot of enjoyment, back to school. But it will be coming at the end of the month, as well as a lot of health education and health screening events. We're supported in this by our corporate partner, Community Health Plan of Washington, and certainly appreciate their partnership as well. Throughout this week, we're celebrating our team members, starting tomorrow morning, having a breakfast-as-served event in each of the three cities that we have the privilege of serving, providing breakfast and beverage to our team members. A tee-shirt and a picnic bag that expresses our thanks for the efforts that they put out on behalf of our patients every day. So thank you again for this proclamation, it's appreciated.
Thank you very much. With that, we're through section four of the agenda, we go to five, visitors other than agenda items, anybody here this evening wanna speak on an item that's not further along on the agenda? Yes ma'am?
Good evening, council and staff, my name is Teresa Richardson, I'm the executive director of Habitat for Humanity. And I'm here this evening by invitation of Blanche, who graciously came to a recent home dedication on Saturday and thought it'd be a good idea for me to just stop by and let you know what we're doing in the community. Habitat for Humanity transforms the area through home ownership opportunities for low-income families. In the next couple of months, we will have completed 125 homes in the last 25 years. We'll have a massive celebration on November 8th, so look forward to perhaps seeing you guys being able to attend that event. 65 of those homes have been in the Pasco area and the rest have been in Kennewick, Richland and Walla Walla. We work in three counties, Benton, Franklin and Walla Walla. And last year, FY 2019, we had a record-breaking 31,000 community volunteer hours out on the Habitat site. And that not only helps us with hammering and putting in floors and roofing and that kind of thing, but it helps raise awareness of the issues of affordable housing in our community. And we now have a lot more advocates in the community understanding what those families need. We've never had a foreclosure and I think part of it has to do with the 500 hours of sweat equity that each family puts in on their home. They understand what it took to build it and to maintain it. We have ongoing challenges, we've got a development called the White House Edition that's just off of Road 100. Three more homes to complete by October. We just had last Friday, our finishing trailer stolen and set on fire. So the timing was really inconvenient because in there were a lot of hammers that we needed to use and other tools. We're always looking for affordable properties and you may have seen just recently a short plot request from one of our properties on Cedar Street, changing it from a 10-plot lot to a 14. So just FYI on that, by condensing the spacing, we'll be able to maximize those, that land use. I also just wanna plant a seed, that permitting in Pasco is a bit higher than everywhere else. For example, in Pasco, our homes, we have permit costs of $10,500 to $12,000 per house. In Kennewick, for example, it's $7,500. So if there is ever an opportunity for Habitat to have any kind of relief from that, not asking for it tonight, but just planting that seed as a possibility. And lastly, I'd like to just give you this quote, we have lots of family stories I could tell you about and I think the last time I was here, about a year ago, I told you about a young man who grew up in a Habitat home and is now a teacher at Pasco High. But this time, I just wanted to give you this quote, it was written by Randall Wallace, he's a Hollywood screenwriter. And Blanche, I mentioned this at the dedication last Saturday, so you'll hear it again. Habitat for Humanity is a perpetual motion miracle. Everyone who receives gives and everyone who gives receives. If you want to live complacent and uninspired, stay away from Habitat. Come close to Habitat and it will change you and make you part of something that changes the world. So with that, thank you, there's room for everyone to be involved and I appreciate your time and your service to the community.
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson. Anybody else this evening? Hearing none, we're gonna go on to the next item of the agenda, we go to item six on the agenda, first verbal reports from council members, anybody attended an event or they'd like to share? Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I know that the council was in many events last week, I was in a couple myself. Went to a Hanford Communities Meeting where we're, we're still making strides and efforts to ensure that our legislators and our government knows that the importance of making sure that we continue cleanup here at the Hanford Site. And we had Dr. Verden, who discussed technology solutions and energy and environmental challenges, which includes increasing our nation's energy capacity and energy generation and use. We also had a brief report from Jason Casper, Vice President of PFP, on the, on the progress at the cleanup site at, at the plutonium finishing plant. And then lastly, we had a group of representatives from Fukushima who are trying to mimic what we have here with our Hanford Communities Committee back in, in their area so that they can have representation for the people that were affected by the disaster there in Fukushima. So we had that event, everybody or many people heard, attended the, the interviews with, for our new chief of police here in Pasco. And I tell you what, I'm so proud to say that the candidates are phenomenal. I, I kinda feel for Dave because he has a tough decision to make, but, but I, I'm just really proud of the, of the candidates we have and looking forward to see who that will be. And then, um, let's see, there was one other thing, but I'll, oh, yes. And we also attended the, a meeting with the Colville Indian Tribes and I tell you what, I got an education that night. Just their, their history and them being so excited and willing to partner with us and trying to make, become good neighbors. And we're looking forward to a relationship with them to, to see how all that's gonna come to fruition, it's gonna take some time, but was very pleased with the camaraderie and, and the event that took place, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, Ms. Barajas.
Thank you, Mayor, I do wanna echo in on pretty much everything Mr. Martinez said, did attend the, what was it, the Colville Reservation Tribes? Colville Reservation Tribes. And just wanted to say I was honored, they have so much education to share, so much information that they bring. And I welcome them in our community, I welcome their, everything they, they showed us and talked to, talked to us about was just very enlightening. Also attended the interviews for the, for the new chief. I do wanna echo, it's, I'm pretty sure it's gonna be a very difficult decision for Mr. Zabell to figure out which one of the very highly prepared candidates will, will be our next chief. Also, Mr. Teresa mentioned, I was, I did attend the dedication of the home to the, let me see if I can say this. Lertha and Tale Pa family, did I say that? And if I'm not mistaken, you said there was 24 homes in that neighborhood built by Habitat for Humanity. And one of, one of the questions that did stick to me was, you asked the family if they ever thought they would have a home here in the United States? And they said they didn't, they never thought they would ever be able to have a house. And so just wanted to, to let you know, it's a blessing, I'm very sure the family is extremely grateful that they were able to, to work into getting into, into their first home. That's all I have to share, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barajas, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I certainly don't wanna, wanna repeat anything that's already been said, but it's, it's very well said by my fellow council members here. The one thing I'd like to add is, last Thursday on August 1st, I actually attended the Tri-Cities Legislative Council had a thank you reception for some of our state legislators. And as part of that, they were actually taken up on a boat trip up to the Ice Harbor Dam to kind of get an idea of what, what does it really mean to be, that the Tri-Cities is supportive of our dams and our infrastructure there. And we as a council, I believe, took a unanimous action to support, to support our dams. And that's, it, it was really good, we had a whole lot of legislators from, from all over the state come out and be able to get, you know, boots on the ground and eyes on, in the field of what we, what Eastern Washington's really needs and what we, and what benefits our community. And so I think that was, was part of a really good presentation and a really good effort to make sure that at the state level, they really understand Eastern Washington perhaps better than, than they do sometimes. So it was, it was a wonderful event to help attend, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Any other reports? Hearing none, also note, we have general fund monthly report in the packet, unless a council member would like to go over it, we'll go into the next part of the agenda. We go to section seven on the agenda this evening, hearings and council actions on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. First item is a vacation of a portion of East Duluth Street. And before I open a public hearing, I'll ask Mr. White for introductory report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, and this public hearing tonight is for a vacation of Duluth Street, which was a street that was platted around 1900 or so and has been determined to be unneeded through the Oregon Street Circulation Plan that council considered and adopted in the late 90s. There is, this, this property is squarely in the middle of the C3, the heavy commercial zoning district. And referral of the proposed vacation to our own engineering division and other utility providers has resulted in a recommendation from staff for approval of the proposed street vacation.
Any questions of staff? Then I'm gonna open up public hearing, if there's anybody this evening who came to speak on this. When we do land use matters, we always have public hearings. And I'm gonna do a second call, that's not something we usually get folks, the public, but we always do anyway. And I'll do a third and a final call, here seeing nobody, I'm gonna close public hearing and Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 4449, vacating a portion of East Duluth Street and further authorize publication by summary only.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Martinez, discussion on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor of 4449, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, motion carries unanimously. So we're through section seven, we go to section eight, ordinances and resolutions not relating hearings. We have several rezones this evening, the first of which is related to a Keniman rezone, C1 to R1. And introductory comments, Mr. White?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and council, and this rezone is for property that's located at the northeast corner of Fifth and Bonneville. The applicant and owners wish to eliminate the C1 zoning so that the existing residents on the house can again be a conforming land use, which now it isn't. And insurance council is aware, non-conforming land uses make lenders and insurers very uncomfortable. And this is, I believe, the first rezone that has been heard in a hearing through our hearing examiner. And she has recommended that council approve this proposal.
And I just note too, that, so we have a slightly different format to our agenda reports, we have a few pages in an analysis and recommendation by the hearing examiner and that part is usually, and it's been in the past handled by the planning commission, but we've changed that and it mirrors other jurisdiction, increasing number of jurisdictions going that way.
An increasing number and you'll find the decision that the hearing examiner is supported by a much greater level of detail, of course, in the planning commission minutes. But she considers the evidence offered at the hearing, of course, her own take on that evidence and then the staff prepared findings that are also considered by the examiner.
So I'll ask, any questions of staff on this one before we consider a motion? And if not, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 4450, rezoning the property at, addressed at 527 West Bonneville Street from C1 to R1 and further authorize publication by summary only.
It's been moved, is there a second? Second by Mr. Milne, discussion, Mr. Martinez?
Just a quick question, so the, the property right next to it?
To the?
To the, it would be to the right.
To the east, yes.
That's, is that, what is that zone currently?
That's, that is also zone C1.
Okay, so eventually?
That, that block is zoned, or that half of the block, that south half of the block is zone C1.
So eventually in the future, as this comes, it, it's gonna end up going in a direction that we can get compliant, or not only compliant, but with the direction we wanna go?
It's, yes, I believe that, that at least the next two lots will probably at some point in the future request rezones, I'm not sure about the, the third lot over, but.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance 4450, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, motion carries unanimously. Item B, Lawrence Stone rezone from an R2 to an I1, little different designation, Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, and this is a bit unusual. There are two 2,200 square foot parcels just west of Sixth Avenue on the north side of A Street. The surrounding property is zoned I1, apparently, the best we can tell, the, the existing R1, R2 zoning was established to accommodate some railroad housing that was built decades ago. The existing owners of the surrounding property have purchased the parcel and demolished the old home. And they wish to incorporate these parcels into their surrounding I1 zone property. They have a building material yard there and they wish to do a warehouse expansion as soon as this matter is settled. The hearing examiner has recommended approval of C3 zoning, as opposed to the requested I1 zoning for the simple matter that the C3 zoning is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And it also accommodates the applicant's proposed land use, which is a warehouse and building material yard. So you'll see in the hearing examiner decision, some additional comments by the examiner related to a perhaps future land use amendment in the comprehensive plan cycle to again address council's sentiment regarding the underlying commercial zoning in this area. Council probably recognizes just from familiarity that most of the property east of this site is also in industrial-type land use. And will probably bring this to council either this coming comprehensive plan cycle or the 2020 update cycle.
And just for context to this, there, there was not any objection to this approach from the applicant?
There was at first because I don't think they fully understood, they, I think initially believed that they were, we were requesting the entire site be rezoned C3. And once they discovered that that was not the case, there was no objection.
So what, the specific thing we're gonna be acting on tonight is whether or not to go to C3 as opposed to I1.
Yes.
But you're also mentioning there may be a follow-on activity, but that is not what we're gonna be deciding on tonight, but that could come up in the future.
Exactly.
Okay, questions or a motion, Mr. Maloney?
I'll make a motion first, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I move to adopt ordinance number 4451, rezoning two parcels located at 28 West A Street from R2 Medium Density Residential to C3 General Business and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's a motion, seconded by Ms. Barajas, discussion, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, so Mr. White, obviously this is a, a rather unusual rezone and, through this. And I just wanted to be clear, we are actually rezoning more than the applicant originally requested, is that, is that correct, two parcels instead of one?
Yes, directly to the east of the red outlined site is also zoned R2. And that was advertised publicly, public notification included the larger proposal site. The owners were in agreement and the hearing examiner is recommending that both of those sites be rezoned to C3.
So the further site to the east is owned by different owners?
It's owned by the same owners.
The same owners, so it's the same, it ended up being just one package that we can?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, I appreciate the, the clear thought that went into this by the hearing examiner and the level of nuance and detail that went into that, that was, that's, that's excellent. And I appreciate the additional context and expert opinion on this, so I'm certainly in favor of it.
Any other discussions, discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance 4451, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, motion carries unanimously. And so it's two hearing examiner things, one was a bit more pro forma, one was a little bit more complex. I think we can see some of the value already for the complexity and I also see the attorney smiling too, so. So these land use matters can get a little So, so these land use matters can get a little bit more complicated. So, we'll, at the same time, there's also our role as legislators, representatives of our community, we'll be finding our way through it too to make sure that we're representing the people of the community fairly. So, we'll, we'd look forward to seeing this process unfold. Next item on the agenda is PSA Amendment Process Water Treatment Facility to move, Professional Services Agreement. Mr. Worley?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we have an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement for PACE Engineering. As council may recall, the city entered into an agreement with PACE Engineering in 2017 originally to start the process of developing a facilities plan for the process water reuse facility. And as part of that contract, we also included the design of the irrigation pump system because that, the existing pump system was in such poor shape, we knew we needed to get it, a new one designed and constructed as soon as we possibly could. So, that project right now is out to bid, and as what we typically do on projects like this, we have our consultant work with us during the bidding and the construction phases of the project because they are the most knowledgeable about the design of the project. So, when the contract is awarded and the contractor is starting to build the project and they have questions about the things that are in the specs or the things that are identified in the drawings, we like to have those questions go back to the consultant to answer, and they help prepare change orders and pay estimates and that kind of stuff. So, for this project, we are asking that council approve this amendment to PACE's contract for this scope of work for the construction phase of the PWRF IPS contract or project.
Fiscally about 87K covered under 1.5 million loan from the Hafic, but then also related to the ratepayers that are using the system, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Questions or motion? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Professional Services Agreement Amendment Number 5 with PACE Engineering and further authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Let's see. It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Martinez. Further discussion? Hearing none, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. With that, we go, no unfinished business or new business this evening. We go to miscellaneous discussion. Start with Mr. Zabel.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I have a few items tonight. First of all, on your desk distributed tonight is the, excuse me, annual report for the state auditor, and happy to share with you that both 2018 financial report, which obviously is our money piece, and our federal grant report, which is specific to federal grants and how we're managing those, are very clean, no real comments. 2018 and 2000 accountability audit, they did a two-year audit. And SAO, no findings in that report. They did convey some concerns about cash receding at the golf course, and that's based on 2015, 16, 17 history. This is an area where reach-enders staff has spent a considerable amount of time and effort over the last couple of years, and those efforts are paying off. Improvements for 2018 were noted by SAO staff. There's more work to do, and I think this, you know, does kind of fold a little bit into, we'll be chatting with you a little bit about golf course and our relationship from a financial standpoint in the future. We're in a bit of an odd position with our contract with CourseCo in that we're in the restaurant business and the pro shop business. And anyone that golfs knows how a golf course, restaurant and pro shop probably is a little bit different than you might imagine. We handle money at the utility billing counter or in our courts and places like that. The business practices that we're, that are required of public sector are not necessarily conducive for some private sector businesses. So, it's a lot more stringent meaning. And so, we're going to be looking at a way in our, in our lease arrangement with, with CourseCo to get us away from those businesses and compensate this city in a different way for the use of those spaces, the restaurant and the, and the pro shops. You'll see that come out a little bit later this fall, and that's kind of what we've been working on. In the meantime, we need to continue our diligence with, with CourseCo to keep the state auditor happy. So, next thing, didn't want to share with you, put an announcement out a little while ago about EDA grant award presentation for the Forest Main Project, East Columbia Forest Main, which bring wastewater to, process water to the process water reuse facility from Grimway and Freeze Pack. And that was scheduled for August 8th, and we had some officials from U.S. Department of Commerce going to be here in the audience. And because of the events over the weekend in El Paso and Dayton, Ohio, the federal government has backed off on some of the non-essential communications and ceremonies, and we'll be probably doing that at a later date. And then National Night Out tomorrow night, and PD has locked up several locations. I know April has been working with council schedules on which ones you might be able to attend, and then part of that also is our Family Safety Night and Free Swim at Memorial Park Pool in the evening. So, those are the things I want to share with you tonight.
Thank you. Other miscellaneous discussion, my council? Note that we also have a primary going on, and I believe ballots are due Tuesday evening. So, if anybody has their primary ballot and hasn't turned it in, please do so, vote. And any other thoughts? Mr. Maloney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to pile into that just a little bit, due to a change in the state law, you can register tomorrow, up to tomorrow, at the auditor's office. So, if you have not had an opportunity to register to vote or update your registration from, if you've, if you've moved, then you have an opportunity to do so on primary day and still, and still be able to have your ballot counted. So, there's still time. So, all you procrastinators, it's, you can still have an opportunity to get out there and get your vote counted.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. And I'll go to Item 12, is there need for an executive session this evening?
Not this evening.
With that, then we go to Number 13. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.